Let's come back to work.
You don't have a great idea.
I just want to make sure we're fine.
Let's come back to work. Glad to welcome you all here today. If you will please silence yourself on them, we certainly appreciate it. Would you stand for the indication of pledge?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of coming here today and serving the people of Walton County. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we now have, and we pray that that will continue throughout the summer season. As the Fourth of July approaches, dear Lord, we especially want to say a prayer of thank you for our forefathers who had the courage and the vision to come to America and start this country so we could live in a free land. We pray bless all those we ask in your name, in Jesus' name, coming. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just on file conflict, this is the last thing I'm supposed to mention.
Mr. Chairman, we have one addition to the agenda. That is Secretary Barfield from DOT is here to talk to us about the financing for the 331 bridge, and also we have an amendment to the agreement between DOT and the county that changes the amount. We've got copies that will pass out immediately. We're having some technical difficulties with our system right now, but speak as loud as we can. The one addition is Secretary Barfield, and then we have one deletion under the county administrator. Item number B. Invoices from Sandman.
Yeah, Commissioners, we're still negotiating with CSCAP. We're very close, but we should have it back before the next meeting. Oh, and Commissioners also, I apologize, we also need to remove number three under my tab. We have revised the contract. Costangie and I have had numerous discussions. We're very close, and there's one small thing we're still checking out. But we're operating under the original contract, which is not a problem. We've got that fixed, but we're going to need to revise it for a couple of technical issues. I thought we had it ready for today, but we don't, so if you don't mind, we're going to pull that as well.
That's number three, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
That's one addition and two deletions.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the one addition and two deletions.
Second. I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? The agenda, motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have Secretary Barfield here with...
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to welcome Secretary Barfield from DOT. He's here this morning to talk to us about the financing of the 331 bridge. Thank you.
Good morning. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to be before the board this morning. It's a great day for the Florida Department of Transportation, and it's a great day for Walton County. These are the meetings that you really yearn for, and it certainly makes the job worthwhile, let me say that. I'm excited to present to you today the results of our bids for the second bridge over the Chalk, Dahatchy Bay on US 331. Currently, we're looking at a low bid of about $118,555,712. That is with Skanska USA Civil Southeast. We are moving forward with hopefully executing that contract. The anticipated construction execution date is July 18th. Anticipated notice to proceed is August the 15th. And with the current schedule that they have submitted, and of course, there will be some changes to this over the life of the contract, but we hope to have the final project completed in June of 2016. And there will be some weather days added to that, of course. What I want to present to you today is I want to make a modification to the original agreement with Walton County. And what that amendment does is it changes the amount of contribution from the initial $75 million that the county made available in participation of the project to, I want to change that to $25 million, which would basically make the county available a rebate of $50 million. My goal and desire certainly is to give all the bid savings to the county, but this early in the process, like I said, I don't even have an executed contract at this point. My desire would be to give all the bid savings back, but for now, the department is very comfortable releasing the $50 million, which would live about, so a little over $7 million, if the current bid and the bid savings remain the same. So with that, I'll open it up to questions to the chair, vice chair, anything.
First of all, I'd like to leave off by saying thank you. I've been involved in the process of trying to get 3314 money in that bridge done since 1995, and there have been others who have been working on it for a long time. I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate the secretary's efforts. You know, hindsight's a wonderful thing, but whenever we entered into this with you, for us to do the tax that was available, and I am grateful for all the work you did especially. I thank you, and I thank DOT for returning the savings to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. I'd just like to follow up and echo on that. In February, when you appeared before the board, you told us that when this was open, you would do this, and I thank you for living up to what you said you would do, and we appreciate it very much.
And I can't say enough about the support of my boss, the Secretary of Transportation, Nath Prasad. He was very instrumental in the original commitment by the agency, certainly in the offering of the bid savings. And again, his support hasn't gone unnoticed, we're very appreciative of that support as a district, and we're certainly looking forward to moving beyond this project and seeing what the next thing we can work with and counting on.
The $7 million, tell me the status and how that will be...
Certainly, the total bid savings is a little bit in excess of $57 million. We're ready to release the initial $7 million, I mean, I'm sorry, the initial $50 million, which will live a little over $7 million. We're, as an agency, we're a little hesitant to release the entire amount because, like I said, I don't even have a contract yet. The normal process before we release any money even to ourselves on a bid and a bid savings would be at least through the execution of the contract, but also on a design-build project because, one, we do not have a design at this point, and we also don't have a primitive project. So things could change, things could change that bid amount based on that. So I'm hoping over the next year, we'll be able to get to a point where we can release more and more of the money. Again, the department committed to any contingency amount that's needed for the project, we will cover that. And that's overruns, issues that are basically just a contractual issue, but as the design changes, especially when you get into the foundation design of the bridge, there's a lot of unknowns that are still out there. Certainly, being a design-build project, the contractor is certainly responsible for a number of the unknowns, but not all of them. So we have to hold back a certain amount, and that is reflective in the overall bid. Right now, it's a minimal bid that we're sharing with you, but the overall cost of the project, it may change. I will tell you, on a design-build project, you don't have a lot of those, so I don't anticipate coming back before you and making a lot of changes to that overall savings. But again, we're just ready to release the $50 million today, and the agreement, the amendment to the agreement says that we have 30 days to basically issue you a check for the $50 million. I'm trying my best to do that this week. This is the last full week of our fiscal year. It would certainly do great things for the district to be able to release those dollars. Certainly do a great thing for the county. I know you're paying interest on that every day. So as soon as I can get that check back to you, I will, and I'll probably have someone hand deliver it if I can get the thing cut, so, but I do appreciate that, and great question.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate what the department does for a long time. I would continue to have this relationship, and we can get more things done for us in this calendar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody heard it on the news, but they're going to have, DOT is going to have a meeting tonight at City Hall, I think 4:30, about the project from Highway 90 to the Alamo Line. So again, that's so encouraging that, you know, we're working on that project.
That may be our next opportunity, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chair, if you would need a motion on these, I'd make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the local funding agreement.
A second motion.
I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the first item under public works. At 8:30, we heard presentations from six firms, engineering firms, this is just select the continuing engineering services contract. And in the past, we've done this two different ways, selecting three and then rotating the work. Almost recently, we have selected three, ranked ordered them, and then the top-ranked firm did the work unless they had conflict or couldn't do it, and even moved to the next term. That's our current policy, so unless that's changed, we'll continue to operate that way. Of those six, you need to select three firms.
Quick question. We used to be on a rotational basis. When did that change?
That changed about two years ago, at worst, maybe three years now.
Is that the reason why we went to a rotational basis?
The way the RRP was written before, there was the top-ranked firm.
How about this RRP, do they say what? It doesn't stay. Does that require a motion to go to a rotational basis or just direction to stay?
But it's an internal policy that we use based on how the RRP was written before. Before this is the change, I would say it's important to get direction to stay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to a rotational basis. I think it works well, and it provides a, as I see a lot of work coming down with that, I mean, a lot of work coming down with that. It'll give us a chance to have a more smooth application of the workload and hopefully better response. I'd like to see us go to, like, motions to go rotational basis for this next contract.
That's your motion, that you were saying? You said, I thought you said thank you. I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
In that case, then there'd be no reason to rank order then, I'd just select the top three.
Once again, because we're considering this, I found the conflict, I'm just having a passion for it.
Who do we handle? Clark, get him.
So Andrew, could you come up and help us add these on the list? Pass it down to the clerk. That'll take a few minutes, so if you'd like to move on to the next item. Next item, you receive information on two firms for the parking needs assessment, and I'd like you to select one of those two firms or order that contract.
Is there a form?
Yeah, here. It was in your book.
Sorry if you have extra copy. Any... Yeah, I don't have anything but forms. That's what I do.
So you have the committee rankings?
No.
And last minute, we had the board send it to, provide them to the board without ranking.
I mean, I don't have any work assigned by NERDA anymore. I don't have that.
We're just supposed to put one and two?
Okay.
Just write one and two? Is that what we're supposed to do?
Right.
It's signed up?
Yes.
And dated.
Then pass those down as well.
Who wants this? Who wants this one?
Pass it down, please.
Unless it's going to be capital one. This one should be A for me.
Mr. Chairman, while they're adding those up, Dan, Billy McKey would like to come up and present a project for us on the hurdle list.
Morning Commissioners. I'd like to just get your permission to submit an application to NERDA for the replacement of corsets. Five coastal dune lakes, draper, alligator, big redfish, little redfish, and deer lake. Pull the corsets out, replace them with bridges, it'll improve the flow, the ecology, the hydrology. I think it'll be a good project for NERDA. There's also a project, parallel project in, I think was submitted by CBA, the Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Water Management District to the Restore Act. We can, you know, it'll just supplement that as another opportunity. Right now, I'm not asking for any funding, just to submit an application to NERDA. And also, we could possibly submit one to NIFWIP, but that's, you know, that's strictly up to the board.
I'll make a motion. I think we should submit as many as we can. There are different costs, there's different criteria, and we might strike you with one and not with another, so I don't, certainly don't think it works to apply to as many costs as you can.
I'll second your motion. Any questions? I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Dan Owens for Library Services. I can take that one.
Mr. Owens could be here today, so I'd like to present the request to appoint Craig Reynolds as the at-large member, Rebecca King to represent District Two, and Gene O'Connell to represent District Five on the library advisory board, as recommended by Mr. Owens.
Motion to approve.
I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Next, we've got Tom Baker, our Assistant Director, he has three items.
Thank you, Commissioner. As a result of decreased funding to our agency and to allow for cost reductions, for the agency, I would consider three changes to the administration plan. The first being a plan to limit two heartbeats per room. This is something that we're not doing now. We're one of the only agencies not doing this. It will decrease the size of housing in the future, and we will see a cost cut from leasing smaller homes.
Tom, is this a mandate for HUD to come up with this plan, or is this a plan that you developed on your own?
Now, we're the only agency not doing this at this time, but HUD has recommended that we do whatever we need to do to cut the cost to the agency.
Is it my understanding, Mr. Baker, that the funding is being severely cut?
Yes, it is. We're looking at, we're looking at the potential of losing probably 20 families probably by the end of this year. This will carry on over into next year. Not sure where this is going, but there is an absolute decrease in funding to the agencies.
Is there any provision being made by the federal government for those that lose, I mean, that have no homes, I mean?
No, no, we're trying to meet with these tenants and let them know that changes are occurring. That's not a great deal of comfort for them, but we're not the only agency that's faced with this, and in Decatur, Illinois, they've just rescinded over $200,000 to people in that community. Cost cuts are occurring. We have to do, before we can receive additional funding in the form of reserves, we have to show to them that we've taken every cost reduction measure that we can to save as much money as we can on this. We are very short on reserves as far as rent payments at this time. We will be, we will be changing our entire method of receiving money from the federal government in the future. We will not have a reserve for rents. They will monitor our situation on a weekly basis, and we will receive a payment to make rent payments at the end of the month. I have a plan at this time, on July 11th, to have a meeting with current landlords to explain to them that the way of doing business will probably change in the future in that we will not be able to release checks by the county until the money is in the bank from the federal government, and we may have, that may cause some delay and then receive a monthly check. But we have been assured by HUD that what they told us we would receive, that we will continue to receive. We've been going through a process, I don't want to get long-winded about this, but a process of doing away with reserves for rents for a rainy day, and what that's done is causing uneasiness because we didn't have as much as $200,000. In the event there was a blip in the system with transfer of money or whatever, that will not exist anymore probably after September this year, and we will be operating by the fact that we'll tell them that we need $140,000, and hopefully it'll show up in the bank on the first day of the month for us to release checks. So we want, we're taking these measures in order to, I guess, to downsize the agency to some degree. HUD expects us to be a smaller agency in the future.
I don't want to get, say, to get political to that, but did you, several months prior to the election, get a mandate from HUD to start putting on additional people?
Yes, we did.
And then all of a sudden, after it's overwhelmed, we're, looks like they wanted to cut funding?
Yes, we did. That's a great question, and in sometime in August or September of last year, we were asked to put on 30 new families a month for the next three months. That created some issues. We put the brakes on that, and we only put in about 30, on about 30 more families because this would have caused a great disaster this time, much different than what we see at this time. So we have taken measures in that we're not issuing any future vouchers to the local people in our community. We have over 250 people on a waiting list that that will not be served, that would say, on a waiting list at this time. I recommend anybody to contact your congressman about this. We have, I've talked to Jeff Miller at length about it. There's not an answer to it at this point. There's really not a good answer to it. I'm not sure, even to the consolidation of local agencies and whatever to cut the cost of HUD in the future.
Motion to approve.
Second. I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
One of the, the second item that I would bring forward would be a change in the administration plan. Currently, if a tenant shows that they have no income other than contributions of Social Security or other federal funding, we require them to make a $30 rent payment going against their rents, and we are one of the last agencies to do this, is to increase that amount that they would be required to pay $50.
It's not 25 now?
No, it's 25 now, we'll go with 50.
Okay. It is 30. You said 30 earlier.
I'm sorry, 25.
Would that, would that result in some people not being able to pay and have to be...
No, it actually will not. Basically, it might impact their ability to have some of their utilities paid. It might come off of that check that we make, but it really won't be a big impact to them. This is, this is something that will work out in numbers somehow, and there's not many of those families who come up with much money as we do it now because paperwork all works itself out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And the third thing that we would need to talk about, and I think I've talked to each of you in the last six months about this, is the fact that the agency plan of the agency did not mention how we take people off the program. We are faced with an issue in September of this year where currently we don't have money to pay the rents, and again, that will be the first month where we try the system out and see if the money flows and say, say, we do not have anything in the agency plan that says that we, that how we take people off the program. This is something that HUD is requiring us to have approved by you before this occurs, and it goes through, this plan goes through the steps. Some of these things we have already done, and we have closed our application process, and we have not, we're not issuing vouchers, and the waiting list will not be worked in the future until we're notified by HUD of increased funding. But the part on the recisions is that we have to recommend how we start to take people off if we see that the funding is not going to occur. HUD has guaranteed me that we probably will not have to use this, but it has to be in place, and it's in your package as to how these steps are taken. And I'd like to say that the elderly and disabled are the last people that would be affected by this. It would, again, that, one of the first things, and I've talked to a couple of you about this, is that we would probably go out to the landlords and ask them to take a reduction in the rent we pay them each month. We're to that point where we may ask them to reduce their rents if they would by $50 so that they could allow, keep more people on the program. And after that point, we would be looking at category B, I think is how it's stated in here, and that we would be looking at a single family, a single-person family would be the first to come off, and then it would be associated with a family that had children over 18, then children with, a family with children under 16, and that on down until we get to the point where it is elderly and disabled that be affected, which I really see that way down from this. We currently have about 312 families on this program.
Mr. Baker, can you explain quickly what the repayment agreement is?
Yes, a repayment agreement is that we have currently about $200,000 that is outstanding in debt to the agency. This was, is a result of us working fraud and the fact that we found that we could overpay rents due to not having accurate income about their income. We are trying to work up some type of agreement with a collection agency or whatever, but that's not going to be very successful. But in some cases, we have repayment agreements, and we have allowed people to stay on the program if they would, they would allow us to not pay the full amount of rent, and we recover some of that monies that we were paying. Currently, I think last year, we were looking at about $40,000 that we recovered from fraud.
Any questions?
Make the motion.
Second, with the understanding that you correct the spelling of the word "for" from the last page.
I would like to say all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
I want to say one thing before Tom leaves the podium. I want to thank you have done an outstanding job since you took over. This is not an easy, I used to work with Mr. Little sitting over there, and this was one of our departments, and I know it's not an easy department to work with and do, and I just want to say thank you for this.
Thank you. I'd also like to say to you that I'll try my best to keep you up to date because we honestly don't know where we stand in the next eight, nine months on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's all this stuff do is the frustration, this is, can't even get a flyover.
Chairman, we have this voice ready now from the six firms. Want to read them out or do you want to...
Here, read them out.
Three firms selected for the continuing services contract, in no particular order, are Atkins, Temple Bridge, and Tampa Tech.
Madam Court, make sure we attach the score sheets and the title to the record, to the next.
Mr. Chairman and Board, the agency selected for the South Walton Parking Needs Assessment is Abcom Corporation. is Abcom Corporation.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to need a motion on both of them.
Make a motion to approve the engineering, the ranking of the engineering firms.
Second. I want to say, I want to say.
I abstain, abstain.
Make the next motion.
Should move.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say.
Stand for the next item. We got their administration at the June 11th BCC meeting, the board-directed staff to begin negotiations with private golf for the contract for disaster response services. We've completed those negotiations and we request that the board would approve those negotiations and the attached negotiating agreement.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say. Opposed, motion here.
Next item, the Florida Association of Counties, Chris Hawley has requested a workshop with the board to talk about the final steps in selecting a county administrator. And they've requested this workshop take place on July 9th at 3:00 PM prior to the board meeting at South Water Park. He would like a chance to discuss with the board members details so that there's be no miscommunication. Been reading in the papers lately, there's been a couple of counties and cities that have kind of been some significant problems at the very tail ends of the negotiations because things weren't clear such as moving expenses, travel expenses, whether or not you're going to have any kind of reception, public interviews, or things like that. If you'd like to get this out and get finalized prior to actually interviewing any of the candidates.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, it would be a motion for a workshop on July 19th.
Motion to approve. Workshop. What will be in?
3:00 PM.
Second. I want to say, I want to say. Opposed, motion here.
Next up, we have Larry Jones, Special Private's Court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. President. We need you this morning. First off, I have to present to you is the second step in our approval of the comprehensive plan for Restore Act and other activities. I appreciate the comments that you provided back to us. They've been incorporated in your latest draft. Today, we're asking for your tentative approval of what you have before you so we can present it to the local Restore Act Committee for their input. But we'll tell you, we are working on some additional language regarding some open waterways and specifically the Chalk Hatcher River Basin and the impacts that some of those stream crossings and issues that we're working on and otherwise, to get some of that language included in here, we'll have that in. Hopefully, they'll take the time you sit next time. So with your tentative approval today with the additions that have been made from your input, we will move it to the local Restore Act Committee and ask them for their comments to bring back to you for approval and then move to public comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say.
Next item pursuant to some agreements when we took the Mossy, the elementary school at Mossy Head package plant to the one at the Dixie RV Center, we agreed to take over the operation of those facilities when they were, that connection was completed. It has been completed at this time and we're asking for your approval to issue a invitation to bid or a request for proposals for an operator, professional operator to operate that system on behalf of the county. We'll look at going, if we can do it through a bid process, that may be a much easier and quicker way. Otherwise, we'll be prepared to move forward with a request for proposals, which we have a draft in hand. So with your approval, we will move that initiative forward and get in the process of bringing on the operator for those facilities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say.
The third item before you is, as we're looking forward to the growth along the 331 corridor, we recognize and realize that water and sewer are two main infrastructure projects that we're going to have to fund at some point, sometime, through some means and mechanism. We're certainly working and have made some progress in working on the tax increment financing to utilize that instrument as a funding source. But we fully agree that we're going to need to look at other areas. One of those would be impact fees. What we're asking today is for your approval for our staff to prepare and distribute a RFP for water and sewer, to do a study of the impact fees for water and sewer along the 331 corridor. We're certainly not asking to implement or approve impact fees, but this will at least have us, let us have something on the shelf that as we move forward and if we take further consideration to utilizing impact fees to fund that infrastructure, we will be a step ahead of the game in knowing what a study would look like, what it would cost, and how long it would take. So your approval of this request today will simply allow staff to draft and issue an RFP for, to study the water and sewer impact fees along the 331 corridor and to gather the information as we look at the future of the possibility of utilizing those fees to pay for the, those infrastructure programs.
Motion to approve.
So can I include traffic impact fees as well?
No. Water and sewer. If we want to look at traffic impact fees, we certainly.
That would be a separate study, traffic impact. Okay, thanks.
Could you graphic boundaries to be?
City of Phoenix Springs, and we will have some conversations with the city of Phoenix in 34 as to including them in the study, but primarily it will be from I-10 to the north shore of the bay. And my vision, it would include the cities as well.
North shore of the bay, not, not the, it only include the south portion?
We can include the south portion as well, but I think it's service already with either south portion utilities or reason.
I want to say, I want to say.
The next item, and I want to offer an apology for some, using some language here when referring to bank erosion in this instance, we're not talking about financial institutions and any issues they may be having. We're talking about the shoreline of the rivers and tributaries. So I apologize for that. What we're asking is, this is somewhat a companion request to the approval we gave us at the last meeting, where we're studying the stream crossings along the tributaries of the Chalk Hatcher River Basin. What we're asking is to allow staff to move forward with an application to the National Fish and Wildlife Federation to fund a bank offshore erosion study along the Chalk Hatcher River and its major tributaries. What this study would do is identify the problem areas where erosion is causing an excessive sedimentation loaded into the streams and rivers and ultimately into the bay and the Gulf. Again, this is simply asking that we apply for these funds, no monetary out from the county. If you approve this, we will simply begin the process of application to fund this study.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say. Opposed, motion here.
Thank you. The next item, I believe, was identified as a public hearing. I don't know if we're going to continue it as such or ask that that public hearing be continued to a later date.
Yeah, we need to continue it. We've advertised it.
Why, what, what'd you say, I'm sorry?
We're not going to present that today, we need to continue it.
Well, I want to present the phasing fund structure, but I believe the direction was that in order to determine what amount of money the board would approve, we'd follow it up to the end of the public hearing.
That'll be advertised separately for a public hearing to reserve some of our money if we get to that part.
Okay. So does the heating action need to know whether this is a public hearing or not at this time?
It was advertised for a public hearing, so I think we should all agree.
Make a motion if we open the public hearing.
Second.
I want to say, I want to say.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that Mr. Jones share with the board the different phase fundings and that we can do that. And I know that the intent of having a public hearing was specifically to identify the amount of money to bring forward out of, out of reserve, but I think that it would be important that if we get this information today, that the board can come back at the next board meeting and make the determination of what phases, any or all, that we would like to go forward with so that we can then do the appropriate public hearing to move the money from the reserves. So I'd like, I would request that we get the handout of the different phases and then give us the two weeks to make a determination when we come back the next board meeting, what we'd like to see.
I would stick around, that's what I was hoping we would go. Would it be appropriate to conduct this in the, as a public hearing and continue that public hearing? We can close this, we go. Okay, we'll just advertise. Okay.
Did I have a question?
What I would do is we make this presentation.
It's never been this confusing before. Yes, Mr. Jones. We go in that way. Yes, we will.
I'm sorry.
I made a motion, he made his second. I want to say.
Mister, in your package, you will find a map and a chart identifying amounts based on public works estimates for.
There was a motion.
We did, we did do a motion.
In a second.
That was motion, that was motion, I didn't call it.
That's right, we did vote on that.
We got motion, the second one.
Now we're done.
Thank you. Before you can, in your package, are the costs associated with a phasing of the infrastructure cost for the Mossy Head Industrial Park? Also, you have a map that identifies those phases or zones as they're indicated. Zones one and two is everything to the west of State Road 285. The roadway is in, so there'd be stormwater and some of the other utilities that we would fund through those numbers. Beginning to the east is zones three, four, five, and six, in that order moving from west to east. So if you start at 285 and move to the east, it'll be zones three, four, five, and six. I stand with you.
Well, what I'd like to see at the next, perhaps you have a chance to leave with the commissioners individually, but our recommendation as to which phases are needed right away or be in the best interest of the county in having those completed right away, whether any or all of them. Obviously, if we had them all, we wouldn't have done the state and asked for money. I'd love to see us continue to pursue that with, with the state, but we need to get something started. And I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. We haven't committed any parcels to any entity, have we? I don't think, as far as I know, the Board of County Commissioners has not said we're reserving a parcel here, company X, Y, or Z.
No, sir, we, as a discussion.
So, would it be my understanding correct that they're all available to, for consideration or first come, first served? So if another company is interested in a parcel that somebody else has been talking about, but nothing's been done, we would consider that for the board?
There's no name of that board.
Okay.
I have a question. Where would the funds come from?
I'm sorry?
Where will the funds come from?
I would think the most likely source would be the solid waste reserve.
Solid waste reserve. And is that money, that's funded by the one cent garbage tax? Is that how it's funded?
The one cent surtax.
One cent surtax, okay. And do you know what the balance of that fund is?
I'll tell you that, do not.
I'd like to know the balance of that fund at the next, for the next meeting and the amount of, would this be a budget amendment and would it be, would it be budgeted for the next year or is this just a request for amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. It would be a budget amendment for the current year and not, not part of the budget presentation for next year. In my opinion, this is some of the stuff, if we're going to do it, we need to start on it now, well before September 30th. So I appreciate the work that's gone in and getting this done, but I would like to see some assessment of, these are the ones we've got to get done first to get going right away.
I can give you a very brief one, Commissioner. The work to the west, which encompasses about 50 acres, in order to have it complete is much less because the road is already in. So there we'll be talking about stormwater and electrical infrastructure. So just want you to see the cost there is considered less, perhaps not less, but more encompassing than going the other direction. And as we move back to the east, those phases will need to stack on one another. So in order, in order for the cost to work as they're laid out, you'd have to do phases three, four, five, and six in that order. So just to, but we'll continue work there to get you some.
I understand that, but I also understand there have been inquiries and perhaps you need to coordinate with the economic development team as to where the inquiries have been. If there have been no inquiries on the west side, would we want to make them a priority? This would be the opportunity to come before the next board meeting with those assessments and maybe the chance to meet with the commissioners and talk about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Jones, would you do one thing for me? Would you, you know, in my declining years to be able to read that, could I have a larger copy?
We'll get you a magnifying glass.
Could you get me a magnifying glass or a bigger copy?
We'd be glad, we would.
That's hard to read.
Who would, who would do the, would you rather hire another engineer to do the plans or would that be one of our continuing service engineers?
Plans for what, Commissioner?
Well, let's say we put in the infrastructure phase one.
Okay, the stormwater plans and the roadway plans are complete, they're designed, they're designed.
They're designed.
Yeah, and the plans are complete and permitted, ready to go.
It would be a, an outside company or would the county public works department do?
These costs are reflective of public works performing the construction services.
Would that take it away from the rotating that they're, that they're doing?
Based on their assessment, they believe they have the opportunity to do this work as well. You know, we certainly want to protect their ability to continue the work they're, they have in progress.
Yeah, because what, yeah, what don't want to happen is for the road work that they're doing on the hill, slowly on either, so that would be one of my concerns.
Okay.
You have a question?
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is above the hearing, anyone else speak?
We are new residents.
Do that.
It seems to be a cross.
Say your name, please.
Say your name. Oh, I'm sorry. Jolene Parish. And we just purchased a house and almost three acres of land. And it seems to be across from the industrial park. And we received some little maps that we couldn't read, it's so small, the print was so small. And we came to the meeting thinking that we would find out what is going to be put in, in the industrial park there because that's what we were asked to come. And, you know, that's what I would like to know, what the plans are for what type of industry. Now, our land is to the. Now, our land is to the east end of the industrial park, crossroad just north of 90, Highway 90. If you know anything about the road.
Mistress White, she's playing up there. Twenty, twenty-five of them. I'm her husband.
This is.
Julie Parrish, Big Red. I'm, she's having a hard time explaining. It's right outside Tooting's Automotive at Mary Cast, between Mr. Ed's kids and where that pond is right there. And that railroad track comes around there. I just wonder if they're going to put a chemical or pollution plant across the road there. We don't want no chemicals or nothing.
I mean, we love our place. It's quiet.
We got there, we just know nothing about it.
The trees are beautiful, just wonderful. We don't want anything to disturb that.
We don't want, because I worked for the president for 13 years. I don't buy noise. I don't want nobody in my backyard needing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to get Jared for a real and make sure they're aware of what we've got going on. I know where they're talking about very well.
But the fire department, I'll ask you another question. They built that Liberty Fire. I've been here all my life. Liberty on the north end of the campus. How come we got paid 70 more dollars paid for their fire department? They ain't got to pay.
And they don't have to pay?
They don't, they're like, 70 dollars, I don't have to pay. Why should we have to pay for their fire? We got the fire department right down below the house. We don't need that.
Mr. Jones, get up, we can keep your rest closet.
I have one more question. I've talked a long time. I went to a moving way back, John, and I used to live up at Calmose. That used to be Bryantville, always with William Truitt. The girl scout coming around, they closed the road. Why do the trains derail? We ain't got no back to, I don't live there now. But why don't they open that road back up? Girl scout ain't there anymore.
Even if it's just for emergency use.
How that train derailed twice several years ago.
That's all we've got. Public Works, someone from Public Works can get up, we can explain that, about that road issue.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Don Riley. I speak as President of Walton County Taxpayers Association as well as a full-time resident of Walton County. Y'all have inherited some sticky problems from commissions of years gone by, and I'd like to compliment you on your open-minded approach to tackling the problems that you've inherited and in particular, those problems that I think I last addressed in January that have to do with equal treatment under the law. I believe it was December 5th of 1994 that Walton County signed into law the 94, ordinance 9416, I believe it is, that authorizes the small county surtax. And these funds are proposed, according to Mr. Jones, to be transferred from that small county surtax fund, and which fund is more colloquially and generally known as the garbage tax and the garbage fund. This has historically been used on an ad hoc basis to fund things that have not been studied, at least not publicly, and have been ad hoc projects, sometimes I think I would call them pet projects, nonetheless.
Could you speak up just a tad?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was not close enough. The issue here is, what are these tax funds intended for? That small county surtax ordinance provides for three uses of the funds. The first two of those pertain to paying for garbage collection and disposal, and the third is for general purposes of the county. I think there is a reason that they are ranked in that fashion. There is a reason that this is known as the garbage surtax, a 1% dedicated tax to pay for garbage. And it has been used in that fashion, but it has not been used in an equitable fashion. I'm a permanent resident, homesteaded here in Walton County for six and a half years. And I am the other owners, 88 owners in my non-rental condominium building, pay for garbage collection. We are not alone in that respect. There are some folks in South Walton where I live who have what are colloquially known as wedding houses. And these are clearly businesses. They're commercial enterprises, and they receive free garbage pickup. I don't, as a resident, many others who are residents do not. I would suggest that before y'all take money from an unknown amount, or at least at this present time, undisclosed, publicly undisclosed amount of reserves, over a million dollars for Mossy Head, that you examine that reserve and that you examine the cost of extending garbage pickup to those residents, not businesses, residents who are being treated unfairly and inequitably under the law. We residents deserve the same services at the same charges as all of the other residents. And as I pointed out, the first two of the three permitted uses pertain to garbage. That was what it was passed for. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Bill Kern. I am the executive coordinator for CAPEC, which is Community Associations President of the Emerald Coast. We represent 70 associations and about 7,000 unit owners all along the Gulf Coast, most of which are in Walton County. Last time we had the pleasure of presenting to you, we were talking about beach nourishment. That's been a while back. So we're pleased to be here this morning. I want to add on to what Mr. Riley has said to you, and it's pretty important. Want you to look at it a little more practically. Our condo owners, usually two people per unit, pay the same taxes as single-family residences, many times much more.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're on the, we're in a public hearing on the Mossy Head Industrial Park.
But this is where your money is going to come from, and it's from that surtax.
There's a, there's a, there's a, the ordinance that deals with allowing for economic development and capital projects that address that specifically. But this public hearing is, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is simply for getting some phasing and some recommendations for where to go with Mossy Head Industrial Park.
I thought Mr. Jones said earlier that that was one of the places that they were looking to take the money from.
That's a possibility, and it's allowed under ordinance.
Okay. Well, in two minutes' time, I can tell you from our perspective why it's important that you look at this as a package and not just for Mossy Head only. That's agreeable?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, this is all part of parcel of this whole thing, is where this money's coming from. So, I mean, I think.
Won't take me long at all.
I'm sure they drove all the way up from South Walton. I think we should hear on.
Okay. Satisfied? Okay. Condo owners, usually about two people, we pay the same amount of taxes as single families, yet residences get free garbage collection while our owners have to pay extra expense. In addition, our condo associations pay for collection of garbage from dumpsters, compacting it, making it easier for waste management to pick it up. For example, compare, if you will, the cost of picking up garbage from 300 private residences versus making just compacted garbage from 300 units. We are economically more efficient, is what we're saying, and yet we pay extra for that privilege. This situation is totally unfair and needs to be corrected. We respectfully request that you act soon to correct it and to consider it as part of this entire process, how you use that surtax fund. Finally, CAPEC is devoted, very devoted, to the county, to making sure that we have equitable systems protecting all of our property owners. We will work with you to make that happen. So use us in that respect, education-wise, as well as any other manner. We will continue to pursue it from a legal standpoint if necessary because it's important that we have equitable services for all. I have a copy of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, Joe Hardy, I'm president of the Surfside Owners Association and a full-time resident and registered voter of Walton County. I'll make it very brief. The tenants of Bill Kern are essentially mine as well. Our building alone has 232 units. We make one pickup. Right now, we're paying under 25, $30,000 a year and we're paying taxes as well. It's double taxation. We hope the commissions will do what's right, and we know it's related to this particular situation. We're not against Mossy Head in any way, but we do feel very strongly that the equity of what is happening with regard to the garbage tax needs to be addressed. Thank you for your consideration.
I made motion again, sir. We close the public hearing.
All in favor? Opposed?
I mean, you can set a, continue the public hearing or?
Yeah, we can set a date to continue. Well, Mr. Davis, now I suggest since the public hearing aspect of it to deal with the movement of funds would come after the next board meeting, I would think that this part is closed and that at the next board meeting, we would set the date for the new board meeting for the funding.
You can do either one. You can close this and consider it done and then open the public hearing the next time for the funding. So we're done.
I'd like to recommend that we wait till the next meeting. At that point in time, set the date for the public hearing.
I think it.
Do I need a motion?
No, I don't believe so. I think.
That's my understanding, and at that point in time, we would decide. Then we would do the public hearing for the month.
Set another public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have the next two items. First is a request for an interim agreement with Costantini Brooks and Smith for human resources investigation. I put it on there because I wasn't sure how large the amount was going to end up being, but fortunately, the agreement, the investigation is basically done. We're waiting on the report now. I just ask you to approve the agreement.
Motion approved.
Motion second. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you. The next item is a request to allow Russian Properties to satisfy a $10,000 ship loan to a payment, a forepayment from Russian Properties to Walton County, the amount of $1,200. Russian Properties has the first mortgage on this particular piece of property. It is in default. They are in the process of beginning a foreclosure proceeding. The owners of the property, who have also given us a ship loan, have agreed to a deed in lieu of foreclosure if we will agree to forgive the loan for $1,200. Now, what that would mean is Russian Properties will pay us essentially the cost of foreclosing the property. That way, we don't lose our ship mortgage completely.
Mr. Davis, we had one of these several months ago, and if I recall correctly, there was going to be brought back to the board some, right as a policy on this.
I'm working on a policy. Frankly, I keep coming up against different scenarios where this could happen. So the policy's gotten too lengthy, frankly, so I'm working on trying to streamline it. There's not going to be an easy policy that will address every possible situation with this type of thing to come up. But essentially, when we're the second mortgage holder and the first mortgage holder's about the foreclosure, we would lose any interest in the property and lose the mortgage. So when they're about the foreclosure, it seems to me to forgive for some amount of the cost of the foreclosure when we have a deed in lieu. Coming down, we'd make a little business, make a lot of business.
Better to get something than nothing at all.
Right. If they foreclose, we get nothing.
Was this the same person that we voted for the last time?
I believe it was.
This is another, another vote, the same person.
By the way, a policy is a good idea. We're going to have a number of these. I'm talking to a number of landowners, first and foremost.
Yeah, we went through this before. Yeah. I agree that we've got to do something similar. These are coming up.
They're coming.
We need, we're leaving a lot of money on the table.
Yeah, and truly, sometimes, most of the time, we're going to be, 99%, 90% of the time, we're going to be the second mortgage holder. If the foreclosure begins, the only thing we're going to have left is a promise, although we can't force the customer people to have a ship.
So is that, then, maybe we shouldn't be the second mortgage holder on a lot of this?
Well, that's actually how the program was designed. Unfortunately, these ship loans are essentially the down payment, and that's essentially how it works.
It's just, it sets up a lot of, we're, okay. Anyway, you're working on that policy?
Yes, ma'am. I can help with.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
With company. This loan here happened to be from 2009, when it was initially, so we're looking five years ago, four, five years ago. I would hope there would be something in place that when these mortgage companies, these brokers, these sellers, because what it is, is they would give everybody any amount of money and know it full well, they would never want to pay it back. And yet, the taxpayers ticked out $10,000 each time. And I know we've already had two, this is a third this year, and two more, how many more, that we're losing because of what, how they're processing those particular loans, not making sure they're qualified, financially able to pay it back. That's my comment.
I have a resort. Second.
I've got a question for Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much.
From a legal standpoint, if it were to go through foreclosure, does that mean the county gets, under all circumstances, the county gets zero?
The only way the county would actually recover is to die back is if, at the judicial sale of property, the first mortgage is paid off, and then there's excess funds given to the clerk of court for the judicial sale by the successful bidder on these types of houses. By the way, we take the shadow look at the value, what we believe the value to be. It would be, it would be a miracle, frankly, if that happened. That would be the only way that the county would get any money back. It's just a, it's an unfortunate thing, your second mortgage.
In my package, there's nothing here from the property appraisers office.
I'm sorry. I thought about outside.
So what you're saying is from your review of the property appraisers records?
Yes.
Is that if this were to go to a judicial foreclosure, the county would end up getting zero?
That would be my opinion.
I have a motion. In the same, all in favor? Opposed?
Yes. Mr. Johnson asked also, would he excuse at 10:15? I have, for the first time, a conflict, and I'm going to run upstairs.
Thank you. Mr. Bank? You bank?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we've got two agenda items. I'm going to start off with John and Michelle cover those two items, but I want to thank you and I want to thank my predecessor, Stan Sunday, for outstanding job that he did in the interim, that he's in here.
He's the guy with a smile on his face.
As staff, I'd like to echo that. I mean, he has a very important job already with the county, he has a family, but the dedication and the time that he gave to the TDC for almost 10 weeks is very substantial. So we're indebted to him, all of us.
Yeah, Stan, stand up and let everybody clap for him.
We have a, John Irvin from this is South Walton. We have a agenda item for you today, which is actually three documents, and those are standard operating procedures. You know, it's been in practice for a couple of years for us to continue to bring in writing procedural information to you. And so what we have today is... in one location to look at as far as what is reasonable and permissible. It deals with a couple of different areas. Two are the posting, hospitality, travel, and how we document and control those. There are some references to what is the current language on file with the county. And in any one of these three, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I did fail to mention that all three of these were unanimously recommended by the TDC Advisory Council at our last meeting.
Any other motion?
I want to say all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. The TDC Advisory Council would like to request a motion of amendment in the amount of $9,250,000. This request for the obligated funds from the parking areas that were canceled, including the parking needs assessment that you're currently working on. These funds will be used to begin the engineering services for the Dothan Street drainage improvements and the Legion Park boat ramp improvements and the improvements to the temperature trail signage.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to present on your agenda this morning. We have two items to bring before you this morning in compliance with the annual agreement that was executed in February of this year, along with the workforce development board and also the Oaklus County Commissioners. The first item is the approval of our budget for program year 1314. The budget here begins July 1, ends on June 30. I believe you should have a copy of the budget in your packets that was presented to you prior to the meeting this morning. Our budget for program year coming up is 3.5 million. As you can see detailed in the budget, the primary line item is for personnel costs. A little bit about our finance process, our board, workforce development board approved the budget. Oaklus County Commissioners at their last meeting last week approved the budget and we're coming to you for final review and hopefully approval of the budget. We're required on an annual basis to have an independent audit. We're pleased to share with you since 1996 by inception. We've had note findings or exceptions or observations for any audit that we've had. We're also required on an annual basis to be reviewed by the state. We're not here for you to ask for any dollars. We're all grant funded and we've come, our money is originated at the federal level and oversight through the state legislation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you want to have about the budget. And then the second item is approval of two private sector members to be appointed to our board due to recent recommendations. Would you like for me to take those items into discussion? Thank you.
Should we both do a group? I would like to say all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Take a motion to, to recommend any point of view.
Thank you.
I want to say all in favor?
Thank you. Thank you for continuing to play your role.
Can I leave?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Callois Wallace, County Arrested, and Valene Wick. Three years ago, the board appointed Ms. Whitman and myself as representatives to the Eglin Noise Committee, a group that was chartered out of the court settlement agreement between Eglin Air Force Base and the city of Alcarizo. The group was chartered to meet and provide a forum for discussion of noise issues arising from the joint strike fighter met down at Eglin Air Force Base coming out of the BRAC 2005 decision. It was to meet at least quarterly for two years. We did that, met 11 times. At the end of the two years, the members asked to continue meeting for an additional year, which we also did. Ms. Whitman and I made most of the meetings. We held up the side. Although Walton County did not have as big a dog in the hut, shall we say, as the cities that live immediately around Eglin Air Force Base and Oaklus County, it was nice of them to invite us to sit in on that and I feel we learned a lot. We have provided you some information from the last meeting, which was typical of most of the meetings in terms of the information provided. The short take on this is that the F-35, after having flown over 1,000 sorties now since they've been there over the last year and a half, has really not yielded any more noise complaints than the F-15s did in their full operating strength, there with the 33rd Fighter Wing. They do get a few noise complaints from Walton County, primarily the Mossy Head and the Choctaw Beach area. Most of those complaints, however, are not from airplane noise but from EOD noise, bombs going off on the reservation. As you know, Choctaw Beach is right there underneath Range 51, which is where the table school of explosive ordinance disposal is headquartered. Then they have another operation up at Field 78 or 87 off the Bob Sykes Road, immediately below Mossy Head there. And they've always, since 1937, have been blowing up bombs out there. So if you have any questions, that's sort of it in a nutshell.
Thank you for your service.
It was our pleasure.
It was our pleasure. We learned a lot. Thank you very much.
Chris Johnson?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Christie Johnson from the West Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm here today to talk to you for a few minutes about the FDOT rural work program and also to get your, I don't need a motion, just a head nod on concurrence with the Public Works list of projects that are to be submitted to DOT in September for development of the work program. And those are your rural area road needs. The planning council has a contract with DOT to serve as a liaison between the department and the rural communities to get input from the rural communities into development of the work program. And I have, also here is Dina Riley-Haylor from the planning office over in Chipley. You have two maps in your agenda packages. One map is of the current work program, 1418, and there are eight projects currently scheduled and funded in the program for the rural areas of the county. I'm not going to read those, but I would like to mention two new projects. One is number seven on your map. That's the resurfacing of County Road 181C from State Road 81 to the Holmes County Line and that's scheduled in 2016. And also, there was mention of it earlier this morning, the feasibility study to widen 331 from Interstate 10 to the Alabama Line. That is a feasibility study scheduled for 2014. I'll answer any questions that you may have about the particular projects, but I did want to mention the two new ones. I also attended the council meeting in Paxton last Tuesday night and the council requested that the paving of Parker Lane also be added to the list of requested projects to submit to DOT. Your Public Works Department submitted a list of projects, that's the second map. It's about 82 miles of resurfacing needs in the rural areas for an estimated cost of about $32 million. Now, why this is important to submit to DOT is the county follows like each year and submits grant applications. One is the small county outreach program and having those projects on the list shows DOT that there is a need for that and I believe it would help in the grant application. Two projects that were funded this year from that outreach program is Otter Pond Road and the County Road 181C. This program is for counties less than 150,000 and there's a 25% match, but they do allow in-kind services and labor. So if you would approve or comment on that list of needed projects and I will take those to DOT in September. Just a, if there are no comments, then it'll be submitted as is and we'll also add the Parker Lane, the request from Paxton. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Trudeau and with me I have my Realtor, Pat Harlie. I'm here this morning to request a release of lien on a piece of property, Seabou Trace. My husband Bernard was developing a couple of properties in Inlet Beach some years ago and has since passed away. I have a buyer of the property and he was doing his research and spending his money to get the property ready to develop and through his title company and his research found out that there was still a lien on this property. I can't sell it the way it is with this buyer or any other buyer in the future with, no one's going to want that property with the lien still on it. It was something that I did not know about and I wasn't involved with development. My husband was doing that. So I'm here to ask for release of that lien so that I can go forward. This developer wants to come in and go to town and develop the property and let it, it's just been sitting there idle and it needs to go forward and be developed.
What were the liens? What were the liens for?
The lien was a letter of credit that Mr. Trudeau posted to finish the project. It's all the way to the final order and he posted the, posted the letter of credit for his final permits for EPA, water and electricity. All the infrastructure is in. It's only an eight-unit subdivision behind the Spicy Noodle in Inlet Beach and it would have been finished by now if Mr. Trudeau was still with us. But we didn't know about the lien and we have a buyer who's willing to buy. The lien is more than the property is under contract for and so we're asking forgiveness of the lien so that this man can go ahead and finish the development.
I'm not sure I understand. There was a letter of credit that was on file because there was infrastructure that was promised to be done. Otherwise, the letter of credit would be closed off. What needs to be done?
The lien was for, because the letter of credit is expired and so the funds have been accumulating in the lien. What needs to be done is the final permitting needs to be done. It's about $2,000 worth of permit, final permitting and then the work. So all of the infrastructure is finished. The only thing that needs to be done is the final permitting for water, sewer and electricity.
Hi, I'm Renee Relich, Walton County Planning. I advise them to come and see the board and see if they would be favorable to be able to do this. The code enforcement case was because of a letter of credit that had expired. There is quite an outstanding lien upon a property. What's been proposed by the buyer is to put up a new letter of credit in 110% of the cost estimate to complete the project. If that would be feasible to the board and he would, that's what they're really here asking for tonight. If that could be feasible, then he would buy the property. That's what I want to clarify for the board is that we actually have a letter of credit coming if this is acceptable by the board.
And I might say it's a catch-22 situation because this gentleman has spent thousands and thousands of dollars doing the due diligence, but he wants to make sure that there is a clear title possible and that the lien will be forgiven if he goes ahead and closes this week on the property and then begins to finish the development.
This is just merely a substituting of a letter of credit to ensure that the infrastructure will be completed?
Yes, sir, it is. This did go to the code enforcement board and they said they would forgive all the liens except for $2,500. So that would have to be paid.
Is that what we're still doing?
Yes. Now, I'm representing the seller. The buyer couldn't be here today, but what he's promised is he wants to make, again, catch-22 situation, he wants to make sure that the lien will be forgiven and that that's in writing so he can close this week, post the letter of credit and finish the project. So he just doesn't want to go forward and get a bond or a letter of credit for another amount of money if we can't get the lien taken care of.
Mr. Davis, I understand that is the code boy recommended I use $2,500.
And who will pay, who will pay the $2,500?
It still remains.
They'll pay it.
I guess I'm confused. Is the buyer willing to pay the $2,500? Even the buyer, the seller will pay the $2,500. It's the $200 sum that we're concerned about.
I would advise you to defer this and find out all the information, have copies of the contracts, have copies of the liens and have all your paperwork in order before you release something. And I don't have, I don't have a dog in this fight at all, but we've gone through this before. We're going to go through it probably some more. And when anybody tells you that there's a rush and something has to be done right away and they want all your promises and there's nothing in writing, if you don't have a nice fat, thick folder with all of the guarantees and the county attorney reviewing it, I think we should defer it and have the county attorney take care of it. We do have land acquisition policies and I think we need one about lien releases.
It's my understanding that Mr. Davis has reviewed this and has agreed with planning to release the lien, but asked us to come before the board and ask for your permission.
Mr. Chairman, I have now had a chance to talk with Mr. Davis. It's my understanding he did in fact review the lien and he had talked with the planning staff concerning it. I don't know specifically what his conclusion was. You have the recommendation of the code enforcement board that they believe that it would be appropriate to release the lien, but the $2,500, I believe that that is sufficient for the board to act if it wants to.
Can we release the lien conditions upon the contract at closing?
Well, the way that it would work is you have $300,000 in liens or whatever it is, the $2,500 or the, that would remain a lien and would have to be satisfied at closing or when that, when the house of that property is sold, that lien would follow that. So it would need to be cleared at closing. So if they're going to close, they'll have to pay it.
Well, I'm going to say if we release the lien and they don't close, that's when they're not.
You would only release the lien to that $2,500. This did go to the Code Enforcement Board, and they said that they would forgive all the liens except for $2,500. So that would have to be paid.
Is that understood?
Yes. Now, I'm representing the seller. The buyer couldn't be here today, but what he's promised is he wants to make, again, catch-22 situation, he wants to make sure that the lien will be forgiven and that that's in writing so he can close this week, post the letter of credit, and finish the project. So he just doesn't want to go forward and get a bond or a letter of credit for another amount of money if we can't get the lien taken care of.
Mr. Davis, is the code board recommended buying the used $2,500?
And who will pay? Who will pay the $2,500?
It's still remaining.
I guess I'm confused. Is the buyer willing to pay the $2,500?
Even the buyer, the seller, will pay the $2,500. It's the 200 sum that we're concerned about.
I would advise you to defer this and find out all the information, have copies of the contracts, have copies of the liens, and have all your paperwork in order before you release something. And I don't have a dog in this fight at all, but we've gone through this before. We're going to go through it probably some more. And when anybody tells you that there's a rush and something has to be done right away and they want all your promises and there's nothing in writing, if you don't have a nice, fat, thick folder with all of the guarantees and the county attorney reviewing it, I think we should defer it and have the county attorney take care of it. We do have land acquisition policies, and I think we need one about lien releases.
It's my understanding that Mr. Davis has reviewed this and has agreed with planning to release the lien, but asked us to come before the board and ask for your permission.
Mr. Chairman, I have not had a chance to talk with Mr. Davis. It's my understanding he did, in fact, review the lien, and he had talked with the planning staff concerning it. I don't know specifically what his conclusion was. You have the recommendation of the Code Enforcement Board that they believe that it would be appropriate to release the lien, but the $2,500, I believe that that is sufficient for the board to act if it wants to.
Can we release the lien conditions upon the contract at closing?
Well, the way that it would work is you have $300,000 in liens or whatever, the $2,500, that would remain a lien and would have to be satisfied at closing. Or when the house of that property is sold, that lien would follow that. So it would need to be cleared at closing. So if they're going to close, they'll have to pay.
But let's say if we release the lien and they don't close, that's what I'm asking.
You would only release the lien to that $2,500.
Okay. So we only release the lien after closing, but we let the gentleman know, the buyer know, that we will do that at closing.
Yeah. And I guess, follow up, and it would be just for this specific transaction so that if it didn't close, it would go back to the $300,000 amount?
Or does that authority?
Yeah. I think that's, just for our protection. Is it really comfortable to have that?
I'll second you.
Just for clarity, the lien will remain in place with the understanding that at the time of closing, the board would be, if it doesn't, in fact, close, it would reduce down to $2,500. It is $25,000, not $25,000?
$2,500.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's my second question.
But only for this specific transaction?
If it comes through and has been up somewhere else, then we're going to watch it come back. Come back and tell them.
Cal Lowes, same call as invited. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am Riley, Ma'call being around here. He had the good fortune to have a grandchild here last week. He had the bad fortune to have the child get sick and get it to him. He can't be here today. He would like to tell you this to the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I don't have anything on gentlemen. I would like to say that Mr. Zikowski with nego vision informed me that this will be his last filming of meetings in the Phoenix. He will be in South Walton on the night. But he is taking a hiatus, six-month hiatus, and so we will miss him. We have asked volunteers, anyone who wanted to run the process and take over from him. So we got that word out, but I would just like to announce that. And thank, thank Mr. Zikowski for his work on filming these. Thank you very much.
Yes, we won't leave again before 4th of July. I want to invite everyone to Phoenix Springs on 4th of July, starting at 4:30. We'll have a parade. This is our 24th year of doing the 4th of July here in Phoenix Springs. Thanks to some generous people, some of them in this room. We will have fireworks, so we invite you to come join us on 4th of July.
Is there a vote on this?
I ordered anger down in Osborne. I'll keep this to five minutes. I was going to speak today during the quasi judicial, but I won't be able to swear in. We'll have court today on this very subject. I received the Sandeston Annual Report last Wednesday, and between Wednesday and Friday, I had an expert go through it, and it's been submitted to the county for consideration. You have a package that went before Mark Davis and was finished, but I think, I find it highly unfair today that you're going to have a quasi judicial hearing when I was only able to get the information that it will be decided on Wednesday, and that's the Sandeston Annual Report. I had an outstanding records request, public records request, that has continued for the last three years, yet I had to do a separate one to get this annual report. This annual report is key to whether there's compliance or not. And into the record, I gave you a 74-page expert report, including three AICP-certified planners, two former state directors, and a former secretary of the DCA, saying that this thing is in non-compliance. And I highly also would like to ask that this board start to have a policy where items that are around residents in the south end of the county be heard in the south of the county, and when there's a development order in the north end of the county around the residents who will be affected by that, it be heard in the north end of the county. Today, you'll hear something that's affected by the south end of the county, and the majority of those people were. It's 9 o'clock up here, and it would take an all-day event to come up here just to voice their opposition. But once again, Mr. Stewart would not have had a chance, when you take his recommendations today, to have reviewed this package appropriately. He wouldn't have had time to consider the expert report, and neither would the other side, and that's what you get when you skip the major development process. At the last board meeting, it was said that this item was not brought before the planning commission, yet it was, and then it was pulled. And I talked to a planning commission member, and we still have a copy of that package. So it did go before the Walton County Planning Commission, yet it was pulled. Your land development code is clear. You're going to hear something today. Like I said, I would stay and talk about it, but it just so happens that whether the Sandeston DRI was in compliance and followed or not is a matter before the courts also today at 1 o'clock. So I find it highly irregular that you're going to hear something on it when it's still a matter before the court. I would like you to consider that today, that you have not reviewed the expert opinion unless you were able to state that you have reviewed it. And if you haven't reviewed it, and your attorney hasn't reviewed it, and nobody from planning has reviewed those expert opinions, that you continue this today because Mr. Dice has not seen it, Mrs. Bradley has not seen it, Mr. Stewart would not have seen it until it was handed to him by Mr. Davis today because it was addressed to the county attorney. So that means nobody has seen any of the expert reports on which you're going to make a decision today. I would ask you to do that in all fairness to people who are affected by this development order. The development order should be in compliance before any other development orders are issued, and that the state law requires local monitoring. I would also ask for this board to direct planning to notify the discrepancies that they know to the DEO office. You currently are building 463 homes on an area that is still designated 146 acres of open space. It only requires a 20-acre deviation to be a substantial deviation. If you can't say that's a fact today, then you haven't driven to the neighborhood that's being built. It's not, it's not my imagination that you're building 463 homes on 146 acres of open space. Those people that you're about to approve residential housing for will have no access to that open space or to the amenities, and you also won't be complying with the three phases of coastal center. I know this probably fell on deaf ears today, but it's something that needs to change around here. The citizens aren't getting a fair opportunity to speak out against this when it skips the planning processes. It's just not fair. It's fundamentally wrong that we not follow our own county ordinances.
Sandy Luckfield, I just wondered what happened with code enforcement this past weekend? Were they on duty?
Yes. They were on duty?
The TDC portion or the county portion?
The county portion was on duty on Saturday.
When I phoned in, it automatically rolled over to an answering machine, and I was under the understanding that it was going to be dispatched by the sheriff. Do we have a breakdown in communication there? We have the panhandlers on the corner in Gulf Place. And, you know, on all the corners, in the middle of traffic, bad situation. They said they had a permit. I don't think they probably did have, so.
I got to come up with that as well. I thought we passed or decided months back that there would be no panhandling, you know, during the summer season and on major holidays.
I thought it was a major holiday. But we set up a system in my office where all the permits for that farm we get were emailed to me, planning, fire, sheriff's office. And so if they were out there this weekend, they did not have, they didn't have a permit.
And I understand they were from Oakliss County, and I believe that we sent only Walton County, these people weren't from Oakliss. You know, I think it is fine, and I can testify, I was in South Walton this past week with my lovely grandchildren, and I can testify that the amount of people on the road, we don't need panhandlers during summer season on any roadway to me in South Walton.
It's dangerous.
It's dangerous.
I didn't notice them being shut down because I was passed there multiple times.
They should have been. They should have been shut down.
They shouldn't have been either, you know, I'm sorry. Any agency, whether it's Sheriff's Department, Code Department, whatever, should have stopped and asked them for their permit. If we need, I don't know what we need to do. This can't continue.
We have meetings last week with sheriff's office and Mark Davis', and Mark Davis is preparing ordinance and that award that will empower the sheriff's office to take action with their will.
The sheriff has to call a couple of things. They call code enforcement on weekends. It should go to their cell phone if they're on the phone and they have a voicemail. The permits for panhandlers do not within a planning, and I don't know about us having any information on any panhandlers, but we don't issue those. Those derive from a different office, but...
Yeah, I did ask them to send us all copies of all that permits.
It'd be very important for code enforcement to know about that if they're having one on a weekend.
Yeah, I think, you know, the problem is, we don't get any, and then they show up. We know that they're illegal, but the question is, how do we deal, you know, who goes out and...
Right. My guess is they were probably not permitted, so they weren't legal in all parties.
Well, and, you know, we ask the sheriff if they see them to stop and ask for the permit. If they don't permit, you know, they're to stop.
But if they're in two or three, and that's the problem, if they're in two and three different places, I'm going to say, oh, Sandy has one down at that corner, and then the travel down there. No, you know, so either every, but I thought that couldn't be at one intersection too. I thought that was one of the two. But is it going to be, it's a huge problem.
It is, it is. It's very dangerous.
Can we take action to shut them down here in the summer?
Mr. Davis is back now. Have we had...
They're going to have a permit. One of those agencies should be able to go out and remove and shut them down.
Can we, in an emergency, say no permits for the next two months?
Some people may have already...
You can suspend issuing of new permits.
Can we, because this is so dangerous, can we, can I make a motion that we suspend all permits until our ordinance is ready?
Yes, yes. Any permits are being approved?
Cannot, but how many do we have?
I'll check. But we can, if the board so desires, we can not issue any more until after daybreak.
I mean, that'd be great. Yeah, I think that's, it's just so dangerous. These little kids are hitting up the middle of the street.
It doesn't matter who they are at this point, Commissioner, it's the traffic, it's the people standing in the streets, it's the little kids standing in the streets.
I do know, you know, South Walton Fire, you know, the fire department's one thing. Collects for various charities, and, you know, we can't really say we're the exception in the fire department.
Is that how it's going to happen?
Yeah, I don't know. You have to ask Mr. Attorney.
You can suspend them all. You can refuse to issue any more permits as a board motion. Nothing wrong with that, but I don't know that you can say we're going to refuse to issue all of them except for the fire.
And Mr. Sanchez was in that meeting, probably, and he understands that during peak seasons, they have to just stay in the drive until around 8:00. So they are not going to issue.
Of course, you know. I agree.
It's a catch-22 because the more doors, the more chances are of getting hit.
And we, yeah, Mr. Sanchez is definitely, he truly understands what happened.
Not issue any more new permits until after later.
And then give us a chance to study and look at this and see what we can do.
You say it, Rose. Got a vote in the second? Yes, ma'am. You have a comment?
I just had one more point. Evidently, there is a breakdown. There is not a connection between code enforcement and the sheriff's office at this point, and I don't know if that connection comes into what you're writing, Mr. Davis, so that it's explicit as to how they're going to work together.
Yes, committee.
Okay, thank you.
Now, a motion to say, all in favor? All right. Motion, yes. We don't think by February 5th, any of them.